Hey Tom, how are you?
Good.
Enjoying our nicer weather?
All here, I'm going to call this meeting to order on March 17th, 2021 at 7:02 PM on Zoom. Let's just do a quick attendance so I make sure everybody is here. Karen, you are here. Christensen? David King? Tom Lantner, Bill?
Yes.
Yep, Tom Talamini?
Yes.
Alright, and Noreen, I see you there, right?
I'm here.
Alrighty, perfect. So we do not need to appoint you at this time as an alternate. The first thing that we need is an approval of the agenda. So if we could have a motion for the approval of the agenda, or any changes that anybody would like to make?
I will approve the, Bill says, Bill, I will approve the agenda as presented.
Alright, and is there any, and who was that?
David.
Thanks, David. Alright, so we have a first and a second. Is there any discussion? So all those in favor? Karen Christensen? David King?
Yes.
Tom Lantner?
Yes.
Bill Sign?
Yes.
Tom Talamini?
Yes.
Alright, so that motion passes. Number five, on to approval of minutes. So we're going to be looking at regular meeting, February 17th, 2021. Does anybody?
Yeah, I think there's one thing, and it's little. It's under 10 Board of Selectman updates. It says Route 40, I think she means 140.
What page was it, Karen?
Uh, let's see, third page. Board of Selectman Updates and Referral.
Oh, okay, yep, sore extension on Route 40, needs to be Route 140?
Right.
Yep.
I think so.
Okay. Yeah, I think you are 100% correct. Is there anything else? Alright, so if we could have a motion to approve that minutes as amended?
This is Bill, I'll move it, reapprove them as amended.
Alright, is there a second?
A second.
Alright, any discussion? Alright, then all those in favor? Karen Christensen?
Yes.
David King?
Yes.
Tom Lantner?
Yes.
Bill Sign?
Yes.
Tom Talamini?
Yes.
Then that motion does pass. Alright, so we are now on to number six, public participation. And so I am hoping that Jason is back. So if you would like to participate, either raise your hand, or try to unmute yourself, and we'll get your name and your address, and get you on the record. Anybody? Alright, so we will close public participation. So we're on to communications.
Carolyn, there's somebody waving at you.
Uh-oh. Maria? Alright, can you unmute, Marie? Alright, go ahead, Marie, can you go?
Yeah, um, I just want to make sure that everyone's aware that under new business item 99A is a consideration and possible action for the additional appropriation of the $3,500,000 for the existing debt that we have. I think it's important that you guys realize that that will have a great impact on the town moving forward. It'll give us an opportunity to pay off some of the bonding that we have. We'll save approximately $750,000 in interest over the course of the remainder of that bonding. And it'll open up avenues for us to bond for future projects. So I hope when you look at that tonight, you'll give it a hard consideration and vote yes for it. Thank you.
Thanks, Marie. Anybody else? And I'm sorry if I don't see you waving, Jason, if you could look through, just in case. Anybody else? Alright, so now we're going to move on to communication. Amy, you have a couple for us, and I have one also.
Okay, so the first one you guys got was Jack Minetz. It was a project he put together analyzing the school and their dirg G. And it was forwarded to Carolyn, but asked Carolyn to share it with the board. So I sent it out to everybody. So that's our first correspondence. Our second correspondence was a unanimous one that just showed up in the mailbox. I got it, and Carolyn got it. And that was about school boards returning money due to not spending it last year for COVID. And then the third one I received today was from Lois Sherry, and she just was thanking you guys for supporting the Warehouse Point Library, and talking about what a great program Hoopla is, and that it's wonderful that our library provides that. Those are three I got.
Alright, so and then today, unfortunately, I did receive a letter from the Attorney for the Board of Education alleging defamation on my part in a recent JI article. The quote was in regard to the corrective action plan that the BOE is now undergoing from the audit findings. And honestly, I am entitled to my opinion, and the fact that the Board of Ed is undergoing a corrective action plan really speaks for itself. So I will not have my speech as a public citizen or an elected official chilled by a threat from the BOE's lawyer. So at this time, I do not intend to spend any additional taxpayers' money responding to this letter from the BOE's attorney. So unless there is any other comments from the Board of Finance, I would like to move on to tonight's business. Any comments from the board?
No, I mean, I, I read the article in JI, and I don't think there's anything that was said in that article that wasn't said at our last, or one of our Board of Finance meetings that wasn't already said in public. I think you reiterated what was said at our board meeting, and I have no issue with what was printed in the JI.
Alright, so unless there is any other comments, can we move on to tonight's business? Alright, so next is monthly reports, which is 8A, which is Town FY 2021 Financial Reports. So that is, Amy?
We'll start with taxes. For those of you that chose to not pay them yet, you have about two weeks to pay them. If you don't pay them by April 1st, you will pay 6% interest on top of your bill. So for those that have not paid them yet, please get them paid. The good news is, we are in good shape. She has collected 90, hold on a minute, her report doesn't have a percent. But my report does. She has collected 96.4% of the 98.5% that we budget. So we only budget at 98.5% collection, because there's always somebody who doesn't pay. And she has collected 96.4% of that. Other revenues are equalized cost sharing has come in at half, half of it so far. And it's exactly 50%. So the other half that will come in in May will make that 100%. And also just about finish off that category. No expected shortfall in the state revenue. Taxes look fine. She has a million dollars left to collect to meet her budget in full, because some of the other things are over budget, like prior year revenue. She budgeted 60, and she's brought in 210 already. And interest in lien, she budgeted 100 and brought in 113 already. The bad news in our revenue thing is the interest income, which I think I shared with the Board of Selectmen when we were talking about budget for next year, but we're not going to make budget this year. I think I've brought in $13,000 so far, oh, $15,000. And we went from basically north of 2.5% two years ago to .0000018. So we are getting absolutely nothing. So hence the 15,000 that we've gotten seven months in, or eight months in. So I have, I'm guessing 25,000, and that's what I have budgeted for next year, but it does leave a $20,000, $125,000 shortfall. There. We have not done anything in use of fund balance with the hopes that we don't have to. Let's see where else we have. I don't think we have anything else. Building has made theirs. The biggest permit was over $100,000, and it was for the Silverman Group out on Route 5. And I think that's it for revenue. Obviously, there's no recreation fees, because we didn't get any. We weren't open last year. But altogether, her whole revenue is only $32,000. So we would be able to absorb that even if we didn't get any of it. Does anybody have any questions on revenue?
I'm good.
Okay, expenses. I don't think there's anything specific in expenses, other than I started to do something different this month on my Board of Ed line. The auditor in our closeout in January asked us to record. When we do a transfer, he wants us to credit our cash and debit their expense line in our fund. So this doesn't represent what they've spent. This represents deposits we've given them, and it's only about halfway accounted for so far. We haven't gone back and done all the previous months. So that number went from zero last month to 4.8 million this month. But I know of at least 5.3 million more that has been transferred that has not been reclassed yet. We were originally doing it as an interfund, and the auditor asked us not to do that, because then it would be an accumulating interfund, because they have no way of paying it back. So it would just accumulate and accumulate and accumulate, and he asked us not to do that. So it's actually going to look like it's double counted, because we're going to have a number in our financials, and then obviously the Board of Ed is going to give you their fund 1010, and that's going to have a number in it also. But our side is just going to be cash we've actually transferred to them, and it should be cleaned up by next month. I don't think we have anything else. The other contribution I did do is I did the pension contributions this past month. So you will see that is now 100% spent. That's a one-time payment. We should be paying it earlier in the year. We really should be paying it in July. But usually when I'm looking at it for budget is when I realize that we haven't paid it yet, and then I ask them to pay it. I have no other expenses that I'm expecting to be over budget.
This is Bill, I just got a couple that stuck out to me, and maybe it's not a big deal, maybe it is. Under the fire department for fuel for their trucks, I assume, there's $600 left in that budget line item. And the other one was in Public Works overtime. There's $4,400 left in there. I assume there's money, other parts of their budget that can just move to cover that, or is those just areas that, I mean, there's?
Well, I'll start backwards. The DPW, if we have, because all our storms were holidays, Sundays this year. So, and we had a couple long-duration ones. So that one, if they truly go over and can't cover it within their budget, we have a fund that we keep separate that has a couple hundred thousand dollars in it. So if we need to cover them, we can transfer the expenses over to that fund and spend it out of there. The fire, they are pretty good about doing it. We did just guess on when we moved that $6,500. That was their guess for their fuel. So it's a little concerning though, because next year's budget, they have even less in there. Next year, they only put 6,000 in. So, so it looks like their 6,500 probably wasn't enough, but they should have other lines that should cover it.
Okay. That's fine. Well, maybe when we do budget, we need to keep that in mind when we look at their $6,000 line.
Yeah, next year it's only 6,000.
Okay. Those are the only two I saw that stuck out to me when I went through the numbers.
Does anybody else have any questions? And the only other report I have in here is I have CNR, and that's just to kind of give you a snapshot, a snapshot in time of where we are with those projects that are available, funds that are still available. Every dollar that's in the CNR fund is already accounted for, for a project, with the exception of the unallocated, which is closed projects, or interest income from the past. We're not getting any right now. But all the balances that are left are already spoken for. They just haven't all been spent. And that has a total of $2.7 million available right now.
Yep, go ahead, Noreen. Question, on the fire portion, now Bill brought up the $6,500. Now that the fire is coming out of the upcoming budget and going, that's a separate thing. Are we going to do anything with that, Jason, or is that just them presenting it at a public hearing to the referendum?
So under the ordinance, the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Finance have the opportunity to weigh in on the present, and the budget supported by the Broadbrook Fire Commission. So we have done our part. You guys, next week, will have a public hearing and make any changes you deem appropriate to the, to the budget at that point.
Okay, so it still comes by y'all. I wasn't sure if that part got negated by the ordinance.
It certainly did not. And so gaming that out, let's say that you guys pass whatever you're going to pass, and then it goes to a referendum, and it fails at referendum. The same process that would, well, a strikingly similar process as would normally happen if the town budget failed, would happen for the Broadbrook Fire Department's budget. The difference is, the second referendum wouldn't be two weeks later, it would be four weeks later. And that's because per the statute that established that department, we need to have another town meeting and recess the town meeting. There's not an automatic referendum trigger. It has, there is an automatic trigger for a town meeting that would be recessed to referendum. So we need adequate time to notice a town meeting, conduct the town meeting, pull the question off of the town meeting and set it to the budget. So that just is not possible in a 14-day turnaround time. That's only substantial difference in the process.
Thanks.
And that's the it for me, unless anybody has any questions.
Anybody else? Questions for Amy? Alright, thank you, Amy. Alright, so now we will move on to 8B, BOE 2021 Financial Reports. Whoever would like to do an update?
This is Christine. I'll share some information. Obviously, you folks can see that we still have a fair amount of unallocated funds at this point. Primarily, it has to do with the same factors I've been sharing. Substitute teachers that we're not able to get, some materials that we're not spending, because we don't have the number of students in school. So that continues to be monitored. We are working on closing out our coronavirus relief fund grant that was for things that were encumbered by December 30th and paid out through March 30th. So we'll be requesting reimbursement for that shortly, and then writing the grant application for the SRT2 funds. And according to multiple communications I've received from superintendents groups in the state, it appears that we will be getting more than 1.5 million, but I'm not sure on the exact amount yet, in additional COVID relief funds. But at this point, we do not have parameters for its use outside of supporting COVID relief and recovery.
Does anybody have any questions?
I just have, I guess, a general question. Could you tell us like a little bit about what the school year's been like, and kind of, you know, how often we've been moving to virtual like this for the kids, and kind of what that's looked like, and things you've worked in. I, I actually had an opportunity to volunteer through JA with some of the Hartford Public School, and join some of their class sessions. So a follow-up question to that would be, have you guys explored doing, doing anything like that through local businesses to get, you know? The idea was role models, or people that these kids normally wouldn't be exposed to, into the quote-unquote classroom.
So happy to talk with you about the year, and actually, you'll see some of that information, David, in our budget presentation. We have primarily been in, I would say, for the most part, we've been about four days a week. We did a period of hybrid, which for us is two days for, in general, the first half of the alphabet. No one in school on Wednesdays. The second half of the alphabet comes to school on Thursday, Friday. We did that for about three weeks after Christmas with, due to concerns about travel at Christmas time, and then spreading COVID in the school due to exposure. But primarily since then, we've been in school, we have had to have maybe three days of remote due to staffing issues. That's, these are certainly numbers that are off the top of my head. You know, I could check to see if you need exact, but approximately three days due to staffing. But at this point, where we're doing, for the most part, simultaneous live streaming and in-class instruction, where teachers, mostly at the middle school and high school, have a webcam going, and then we'll invite the groups of students who are remote learners to be a small group, where they'll work with that small group during a period of time, while the majority of the classes working on, the in-school students are working on an activity or a lesson. And then we have seen where students who are at home will be logged in and virtual, like we are now, into a small group, and they'll be participating through a computer with maybe one or two students who are in class. So they're part of instructional groups. Middle school students, teachers are live streaming their full class, just letting it roll. So students who are at home can just log in and be part of the classroom. Elementary is a little bit harder, because many of the students don't have the skills that they need to log in independently and get through their work. So our students who are remote are doing a lot of lessons through the CSO program, and that requires teachers to either record a video or to create a lesson and upload that. And then after it's completed by the students, they look at it on the CSO program and grade it or comment, and then get it back to the students. So in terms of junior achievement, that gave me a flashback. I did junior achievement probably 15 or 20 years ago in when I was working in Massachusetts. But we haven't, I don't recall that we've had a conversation in East Windsor about doing junior achievement. So, you know, I, I don't recall being approached about, about it by anybody. I may have, but it's just not coming to mind.
Yeah, the, I guess, one follow-up question on that, do, you know, in general, do kids have, you know, how, how is it decided that they go virtual? You know, because you kind of mentioned that they can jump in. So do parents and kids have the ability to say, hey, today I'm keeping my kid home, he's going to be virtual?
In general, one, if the entire district is, or one particular whole school is making a change, that's generally my decision due to health issues or staff coverage issues. We ask that families who decide to be remote, attend remotely, and that families who are going to attend in person, come regularly in person, and don't flip-flop back and forth day to day. But there are times certainly where if a student is not feeling well, or they've been required to quarantine due to exposure or travel, we do have them log in. So a student who typically is in person may be remote for a period of 10 days or two weeks if they need to, due to exposure or illness. And certainly, students who are remote can come back into in-person learning. We just ask for a couple days' notice to get them scheduled and in, you know, formulated into a classroom before they show up.
Great, thanks. Just wanted to get a feel for what the school year's been like.
Absolutely. Happy to talk to you about it.
Alright, anybody else? Any questions?
Carolyn, I have some questions. Snoring.
Okay.
Oh, no, no, I just, I'm hoping I can get some clarification. I was looking through the reports we got, and I started to compare them to what we got last month and the month before. And on the report, Christine, that comes from the Management Solutions, that, that cover sheet that you sent, that's got all the funds on it?
I'm looking at it.
First of all, there's, they don't all add up. So I'm not sure if it's an Excel sheet, or if it's like cam done in, but like on this month's, the 2989388, it's actually 338. And so then when you kind of extrapolate it over based on things, it, it, it doesn't quite add up. And then when I went and looked at it last month, that actual fund column in both January and February, the report said three, the total said 3.7 million, but when you add it up, it's 4.1, a little over 4 million. So as I was extrapolating them, I wasn't getting to the numbers. So that's like, I'm not sure who's doing it and how it's calculating, but that's just a little issue. And then, question for this month. In January and February, up on the top portion, there were funds for Title I, ID, IDEA 611 and 619. Those are no longer on there at the top. Do they, is that something that? Um, you know, it dropped from last month, that whole column was 3.4 million, and now it's down to 2.9. And it's because those funds are not up there anymore.
Actually, I'm going to ask Andy to answer that for you. Andy, you're there, right?
So what it is, is that, that front cover sheet does a comparison of budget to actual for the grants that we had anticipated receiving, and the actual that we've received. We have started to reclass expenses. So when we do that, reclassing the expenses to the grants, those become no longer available. So that's why those are no longer on the front page, because the expenses have been expended to the grant. So they are no longer available, which is what that front page shows.
Okay, so as you get that money and?
That's correct. We reclass and then.
Drops out. Okay, that explains that. Um, and then in looking at the actual, the detailed sheets that we get, the Excel spreadsheets, I just want to make sure I understand what I'm looking at. I went through and looked again at January, February, and March. And things, you have your revised budget, your dated expenses, your encumbrances, and then your available budget. There's, they seem to change, like in the, the Board of Ed district-wide line. In January, it was like 10.9 million, and then it went to, it stayed at 10.9 million for February, and now it's down to 9.9 million. And I think that came from the pension. The pension got moved out of that district-wide and got put into its own category. Is that? How, because I'm looking like at Broadbrook School, in January, their budget, their budget number was 6.5, and now it's down to 5 million? So?
You're correct. We've been in the process with, working with human resource. Well, first of all, on the pension side, we are, because we have that as its own center, if you will, of a cost center, not just buried in the district-wide. So we did move that out, and it's the same when we're looking at, we're updating personnel regularly as far as moving them from either grants to local, et cetera. So we, we are, it's a constant moving target so that we know what it is that we need to, and where it is that we're moving people when the funds come in for the grants, and we're aligning them with the grants as to where they're to be paid from. So that changes, that changes regularly, especially now, since the grant funds, we're starting to, you know, begin our year-end closing process.
Okay, so for Broadbrook School particularly, it went from 6.5 and down to 5. And for in that middle school and high school, they started lowering our increasing. So I kind of assumed we're just, you're making adjustments to get people into the right.
That's also true. It's a combination of. That's also true. It's a, it's a combination of, it's a combination of that. Correct.
All right. And then on the report, there's the year-to-date expended. And in Broadbrook School, again, in January, the year-to-date expended was 3.3 million. And now it's down to three, a little over 3 million. So is that because of corrections that are being made for things that you're paying and then?
We're going to look at the, the majority of the expenses at the Broadbrook were from the grants. So those two grants that you mentioned beforehand, uh, those expenses were moved from the Broadbrook local to those, the Title One and the two for the IDA grant.
Okay. Okay. So there's kind of a, a constant shifting of funds from place to place on both sides, both the budget numbers and the ex, what you've spent. The encumbered numbers also float around. So I'm assuming that's when you do the, the movements of everything, everything gets moved together.
Uh, it's a guest. And also if there are encumbrances that are no longer needed, those would be canceled or if something comes in that is uh, if there was a purchase order done and the bill comes in less than the purchase order, that would free up money in the encumbered column. Uh, you know, so as a normal operations occur, all those things change.
Okay. And then, um, all right, that explains that. I just wanted to make sure I'm understanding how you guys flow your accounts around. And then I had asked last month about, there was a $350,000 transfer last year into the, um, cafeteria account and, um, I had thought that it was possibly the, what the auditor had done. But he said it was not his transfer, that it came through the Board of Ed. And I'm wondering where that came from? And why?
Was as the, with the end of the year and with what, as we all know, the challenges of the food service program. We, it wasn't transferring money in from the Board of Ed to food service. What we did is we charged $350,000 of expenses from the food service revolving account to the local appropriated budget. Uh, and that was to help out the food service program because as we know, it's been running in a deficit. So we did as what we're allowed to by USDA regulations regarding a food service program, which was to use the local funds to cover and support the food service program and allow us to carry a balance over that we're allowed to by USD regula- A regulations.
Okay. All right. And then while we're on the cafeteria, I have some more questions. Um. It, it's within your lines under the food service category. There's like five areas, travel, other suppliers, wages, cleaning and food service. On the food service line, what is that line for?
That's food.
It's food. Okay. Because it was in December and January, the balance there was like $95,000 and then in February, it leaked to 760,000. And I'm wondering why? Or, and then again, in this month, it went up another, now it went up like $20,000 or something. But it, there was a huge leap from January. It was the, the line had 95886 and then in February, it went up to 760,000.
Let me just pull it up here. I'm sorry.
It's that, um, five five seven zero zero zero.
Yeah, I'm just trying to find the reporting. I'm looking at the February report and it was 712,809 dollars and then in the March one. So are you, you said the January one? Is that what you said was?
I had in January on the reports that we got in our packages, the January report had 95,886. And then my February had 76554. And the one I'm looking at right now is I think 780.
Okay.
Or 700 and yeah, the total between the encumbrances and the expended is 780,554 dollars.
You know, I, I found January's now. Yeah, oh, yeah. I will get back to the board on that. I just need to do some research on that to see why. admittedly, I, uh, looking at where it is that we're trending, it's lining up with where we've been about this time of the year. So I'll, uh, I'll get back to you on, uh, why the jump from January to now. But as I say, when you compare the last year at this time, it's closer to what it is that we, uh, or even the prior fiscal year, not using last year as a measuring stick because of what we had experience. So I'll take a look and get back on the report.
Right. Well, and just on the same, just so you can look, look at it for me, Andy. When I looked at the auditor's report and we don't get great detail from the auditor, other than we get expenses, um, like the general expenses. And the expenses that they were showing in total were about 685,000, including everything, not just food service, the entire line of expenses. So you know, I, maybe I'm misreading something, but, um, yeah, if you could just clarify that for me, that'd be great.
Yep.
That's it. Thank you.
Sounds good. Anybody else? All good? All right. So we are going to move on to FY 2021 transfers.
Hey, I just have two transfers for you tonight. Um, one is from the non-negotiated contingency wage line for the dispatcher contract. Oh, I have the wrong description. Sorry. It's for the settling of the dispatch contract and you can see the money is going to the dispatch salary in the PD overtime line. That's number 30. And then number 31 is for $4,000 and it's the police giving money from the private duty fund over to CNR for completion of a renovation that they're working on over there. I think it's a meeting room. Interview room.
All right. So we could start. Transfer number 30, if somebody would like to make a motion for that.
Uh, this is Bill. I will move that we approved transfer request number 30 for the police department. Any amount of $20,000 from non-negotiated to the police dispatch, police dispatch summer salaries and police overtime line.
Okay. Is there a second?
Karen Christensen, second.
And any discussion?
Hey, Amy, one question. It says on the reason for transfer funds from vaccines, vacancy, sorry to cover. Okay, got it. Nevermind. I read that one. No questions.
Oh, sorry. There was a lot of feedback there. Okay. Anything else?
Uh, that's not the right amount. Sorry.
Amy.
I told you that I, I have finished that transfer. I don't know why the planning stuff is still in there from last month. But it should be, the whole balance is 26,674.17. 23,771 needs to go to the salary line and 290317 needs to go to the OT line.
Okay. You gotta slow that down for me for a minute. So the total transfer was 26,617.
A 67417. Excuse me. Can we take away the toy?
I was wondering what that was. All right. So
Our new baby.
23,000, what is going where?
So, so 23,771 dollars is going to salary.
Okay.
Which is correct, the right line on, on there.
Yep.
And the second one is the PD overtime, 2,903.17 cents.
So would we like to fix our motion?
My motion to make the dollar amount of the transfer, 26,774.17 cents.
Okay. Is there a, is there a second?
Karen Christensen, I second.
All right. Any further discussion? All right. All those in favor? Karen Christensen?
Yes.
David King?
Yes.
Tom Lantner?
Yes.
Bill Sign?
Yes.
Tom Talamini?
Yes.
Okay. The motion passes. On to transfer number 31.
Hold on, timeout. You got to, that was just to approve the amendment. Now we have to
That's right. You're right. So let's move on to the motion.
Is there any more discussion on it? That which I don't have any.
Yep. Yep. All right. So all those in favor? I don't know where I'm getting the feedback from. Sorry, guys. All those in favor? Karen Christensen?
Yes.
David King?
Yes.
Tom Lantner?
Yes.
Bill Sign?
Yes.
Tom Talamini?
Yes.
All right. Onward we move to 31. Is this the right amount, Amy? If we could have a motion.
I move we approve transfer request number 31 for the police department in the amount of $4,000 from the private duty fund to CNR Police Department reservations, renovations, sorry.
Is there a second?
Tom Talamini, I'll second that.
All right. Any discussion? All right. All those in favor? Karen Christensen? Karen?
Yes.
Uh, David King?
Yes.
Tom Lantner?
Yes.
Bill Sign?
Yes.
And Tom Talamini?
Yes.
All right. So that motion passes is bringing us on to nine new business. A, which is consideration and possible action on an additional appropriation in the amount of up to $3,500,000 to pay down existing debt as approved by the Board of Selectment on March 4th, 2021. And I'm going to kind of turn it over to Jason.
So, uh, this is, so a couple of things. We have an abundant surplus in the undesignated fund balance. Well in access of what the town stated policy is. We are north of 20% in the, the undesignated fund balance. I think it's a 26 and 26% and change. And so we need to spend it down in order to become in compliance. Um, so in thinking about how best to do that, uh, it became apparent to us that if we were to pay down um, the, one of the clean water loans associated with the sewer line on 140, um, pay off the lease purchases. These, a couple of the non-callable bonds, uh, the 2018 middle school roof and the 2014 uh, bonds that were done. Um, we would be able to prevent the town from incurring three quarters of a million dollars uh, in interest that we would otherwise be liable for. We would be able to accelerate our, um, ability to bond additional projects and we would be able to, um, I lost my train of thought right there. I'm so sorry. We'd be able to pay down, uh, prevent the incursion of interest. We would be able to accelerate our bond capacity and would be, we would be able to bond more packages than we would be able to outright buy for the 3.5 million dollars. So this is, this is a case where we're looking to some of the, some of the savings and pay down the credit card.
Anybody have any questions for Jason?
I don't have a question for Jason. I mean, it makes sense to me. What, what was, what is our fund balance number? I don't have that right where I'm sitting and I can't find it.
26.7%, but Amy probably knows specifically.
Um, it's in your package. It's number nine A1. Um, our fund balance currently is 11.6 million, but once you take out the 750 that we may use in this year's budget, the 478 to the Board of Ed's 2% bond, it leaves us with 10,458023. And our 20% is only 8,200,002. So right now we have 2.2 million dollars above our cap. And what we've done the last couple of years is spend it down on capital projects. Where in this case, we're really thinking we'd like to pay out debt. The clean, clean water loans are 40-year loans. That's where the $750,000 savings is really coming from. Because we've had them for a long time, but we pay so little that we've only paid off like $100,000 of the 1.4 million that we've paid already. So over since 2015, so over six years, we've only paid down 100,000 of the 1.4 million we borrowed. So that's really why I want to pay that down, but it's not a big debt capacity. So it doesn't open up enough capacity if we only did that. So that's why it's a combination of the leases which are in CNR, the bond deficits which are in our debt service, along with these clean water loans, which are also in our debt service.
Couple, couple of other points on that. Um, you'll note in my budget presentation later that we left the CIP budget flat um, at 920,000 next year versus 920,000 this year. Um, the thought behind that is that by paying off those lease purchases, we would free up effectively 10% more budgeted money, already budgeted money for CIP projects without having to increase the CIP budget. Um, the other thing that, uh, we would be able to do is if these, if this added appropriation were passed and approved by voters and we were to come back with additional bond pack, bond projects that need to be done, we could take those on without increasing our debt service budget because that money is currently budgeted. So we can do more projects sooner and at no additional costs in terms of, of real tax dollars to the, to the voter.
Any other questions from the board?
Carolyn, it's Noreen.
Yep.
Um, I just want to be clear about how this affects the upcoming budget because when people hear, you know, we're going to do this because we're going to save money. A lot of times they assume that means like that money's coming out of the upcoming budget. They expect to see a drop in, in dollars that are being spent. But that's not really necessarily the case. We want to take those funds that we're spending on interest and use it to do other things that are necessary. So I just get a little eerie when we say saving $750,000 when there are some people who look at that as, okay, I'm going to look at it and the budget should drop by $750,000. And that may not be the case because we're going to reallocate it to do some other stuff.
Well, no, 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 no. The $750,000 savings is interest that will not be incurred over time.
Okay.
If we don't do this over time, just like on your credit card bill, when you get that, that APR, um, you're, we would be accruing interest by paying off the principal, we would no longer accrue that interest. So that's, that's an amortized number over the life of those projects that we're paying off. It's not to say that the, the debt service line or the CIP is coming down by 750,000. It's preventing us from taking on that obligation over the life of those projects.
Correct. I, I just want to make I get a little eerie when we start saying we're going to be saving people, we're going to be saving money that people naturally think that that means the budget's going to go down and that's not necessarily what's going to happen. I agree we should do it, but, um, I, I just get a little concerned that people see it as a reduction immediately from what we've already got in the budget. That's
Maybe, maybe we could say it as future interest savings.
Yeah.
Um, it's a very tiny bit of it is next year's money. I think less than $50,000 is actually less for next year's money. The rest of it is future years. It goes out another 35 years.
Right. Yeah. I, I just want people to understand how it works all the way out. You know, it's there's not a lot of people who think that, but some people hear it and they immediately think that. So that was it. there's not a lot of people who think that, but some people hear it and they immediately think that, so that was it.
We're gonna be careful on the messaging, assuming approval from your board as this moves forward to the referendum ballot, but, you know, required a million here, three-quarters of a million there, sooner or later is real money. This is a no-brainer in terms of a policy decision.
All right, any other questions? All right, so if there's no more questions, if somebody would want to make a motion to do the additional appropriation to pay down the existing debt?
Yeah, and that's, needs to be sent, sent to referendum as part of the motion or not?
The resolution was included in your packet, the Board of Selectmen have the ministerial function of sending, sending things to, which is what we have done, you guys need to approve the expenditure.
Right.
All right, so this is Bill, I'll move, we approve the, I guess it's the resolution to appropriate three-hundred and, ah, three-hundred and five-hundred thousand dollars from the town's unassigned general fund balance for the prepayment of outstanding debt obligations to the town.
Is there a second?
A second.
David King is the second, and is there any more discussion?
No, I guess that I'm, I think it's a great idea, I mean, it is over, you know, savings over time. I do agree, you know, in paying off the, the money we own on the lease for the air conditioning system, I believe, is the heating system in the trucks, free up money that can be used for, you know, every year capital instead of making payments that way, I mean, and we got the money in the fund balance, sorry, I missed that page, Amy, when I looked through things earlier. But yeah, I mean, we're still within our fund balance and it makes perfect sense to me, so I think it's something we should do.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I would just say especially timing is really good. Obviously, the Fed came out today and said that they intend to keep interest rates at these historic lows for, you know, at least the next year, so kind of prepaying all this old debt that was taken out with higher interest rates, positioning ourselves so that if something did come up that we needed to do, we would have the capacity to now borrow at a lower interest rate is a very smart idea.
Absolutely. Anybody else? All right, so all those in favor, Karen Christensen?
Yes.
David King? David?
Yes.
Tom Lantner?
Yes.
Bill Sign?
Yes.
Tom Talamini?
Yes.
All right, the motion clearly passes. All right, so we are gonna do, sorry, what, Jay?
Thank you very much.
All right, now we're moving on to nine B, Board of Ed, FY nineteen-twenty corrective action and update, so who would like to take that away?
I can speak to the first piece as soon as I unmute myself. The reconciliation training is scheduled for March twenty-sixth, that has been rescheduled approximately four times because we've had to postpone because we haven't had the correct information available from Webster Bank, but that should be resolved by the end of this week, and then we gave ourselves a little bit of a buffer between the proposed date of resolution and the date of the training, so that should be the last piece of working within Munis that needs to be addressed as the reconciliation training.
All right.
A quick question.
Yep, go ahead.
How many people are receiving training?
Three.
Four, or three? Three?
Yeah.
Okay. And who are those people?
They're the staff in the business office. That's, their accounts payable and receivable, clerk Andy, and then one of Andy's colleagues is receiving training as well.
All right, anybody else? Board-wise questions?
Yeah, I did have one more. You know, I went back and I looked, obviously, you know, happy to see that we're kind of moving past this. One thing that stood out to me, you know, obviously, I appreciate you guys getting these letters to us with the action plans, but on the letter, it states that the reason for the reconciliation was due to the switch to Munis. But at our January meeting, it was kind of explained to us that the reason for the delay was we couldn't get statements from the bank. So I went back and I listened to it, it was the January twentieth meeting, so I'm just kind of wondering which one is it?
Sorry, David, I'm not, we need to have statements available electronically to do the reconciliations in Munis. I guess, can you say your question again? Sorry.
When we originally kind of discovered this, you know, obviously, I understand, people go out, we get that, you know, I have employees go out all the time, and, you know, it was kind of explained to us that the reason that we weren't able to have the reconciliation was due to an online access issue with the bank, where there was no one available in the office to kind of pull the statements and print them out.
Oh, I think these are two different things that we're talking about. So I think one of the pieces you're speaking to was gathering, at least that's what I'm pursuing from your question. One of the pieces you're speaking to was providing statements to the auditors. And the piece I'm speaking to is that as we have switched over to Munis and the Board of Ed is taking over function, our accounts have been made, what I would call a separate company, that's the language they use, and we need to do, we needed to do some different setup to have access to the, this year's statements for reconciliation, and that is something that we have had to postpone multiple times because we have had to do additional steps through Webster Bank to get access. So as far as I know, based on my communications with folks from Webster Bank this week, there should be no further issues, I'm not aware of any additional steps that are required. I have done the access training that I need to, folks from TMS have done that, we are just waiting for Webster Bank to finish doing gathering previous statements for us, previous to current, so that all of that can be uploaded and used with the training, so.
Okay, yeah, and I think I'm understanding this right, but obviously, like, you couldn't reconcile and use Munis without having those statements from the bank, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so, and I understand you're working, how many people will have access to like be able to pull the statements from the bank once you kind of figure all this out? And ideally, will it be the same three people who have, who are doing the Munis training?
The three people who are doing the training definitely do, and then there are an additional two, myself being one, and then Dr. Children, the Assistant Superintendent, has my level of access, should I become incapacitated and unable to do the highest level of access needed, he would be stepping in in that case, but outside of that, he will not be generally accessing the banking, but he will have access, should I, as I generally say, get hit by a bus and can't do my duties, he will be able to step in and take care of that.
Okay, so they do somewhat go hand in hand, you know, the Munis access and the bank statements, and at this point, you can say that we've safely kind of resolved both of those issues.
I believe that that is the case, yes.
Awesome.
Okay, anybody else?
Yeah, this, this is Bill, and I mean, I said I glad that we have a, you know, plan in place to take care of this, this issue that we had, hopefully it doesn't recur in the future, but to me, it seems like the implementation of Munis was, was a problem, but it seems like some of the decisions to implement this were made late, that changed, that extended out, part of the problem, I mean, I think late in the process that it was decided that you were gonna split out to two separate companies, as you're calling them, I guess, and then just didn't have the time to, to get it all done, but for year-end purposes. And it just seems like the, you know, the trainings and all should have been done well in advance of converting over to Munis if it was gonna be something that was gonna be new to the employees that were gonna be doing this, and again, it's just, you know, it's a black eye on, on the town, the boards for, you know, having this violation or deficiency is, I guess is the proper term for it, in our audits report, and it just, it doesn't look good, you know, again, as I've said it before, this is public money, and we need to make sure we're, we're doing everything in a timely manner, and, you know, it just, it just seems like we bumbled this right from the start on, on the Board of Ed side, and that just doesn't, doesn't look good, and I think the opportunities were there to make it happen right, and it just, it didn't happen, and I guess that's where my, my disappointment is in, in the whole process, and maybe others as well, and I can't speak for everybody.
Well, Bill, I'd like to respond somewhat to that, because the trainings that we're doing, we're doing in the order that the Munis implementation consultants have recommended, and reconciliation training was not one that would be done before we were using the program. The implementation, I will, I don't think it's a huge secret, hasn't been exceptionally smooth, but we've had multiple implementation consultants, so you know, they even continue to challenge the decisions made by the previous implementation consultant. So we, we have had issues, I have addressed them with the project manager on the Munis side, and we're, we're still working through those issues, but the audit was done for last year, these Munis, the Munis conversion for the Board of Ed side was effective July one of two thousand and twenty, which is a different fiscal year. So those are separate issues, so we, we are moving along with using Munis this fiscal year, and we are doing the trainings and the processes that we need to do, so no conversion is going to be without any hiccups, but that is not for lack of effort and diligence on behalf of the staff that work for me.
No, as you said, it just, I don't know, it just seems like it, you know, it's, it's, you know, the conversion happened, and it just seems like it just didn't happen the way it should have happened, and I understand that there's issues, but it, I don't know, it just seemed like we knew it was coming long in advance of when it actually hit, and it just didn't seem like we were just ready for it, but that's, again, it's, it's my opinion, and and I'm glad you're correcting it, we're moving on, and hopefully, we have never have to have this discussion again in the future.
I couldn't agree more, that I hope we never have to have this discussion, and I think it's, it's okay for us to agree to disagree on, on how things moved with it, but you and I are exactly on the same page, that we never want to have to have this discussion again.
Thank you.
Sure.
All right, so anybody else? Anything?
Carolyn, it's Noreen.
Oh, okay, go ahead, yep.
Last month, I, I don't think you were here, Christine, I think it was Kathy who touched on it, that there's a an issue with your payroll side through Munis. Have, is that being resolved? With a new implementation person, or are you still having the issue of getting that payroll portion going with Munis?
Well, as you said, you know, I, I wasn't able to be at the meeting last month. For the most part, payroll.
Would you like me to address that, Christine?
Oh yeah, go ahead, if you've got.
What it is, the issue has been that when we did the conversion, the salary accounts, we assign individuals to the respective salary accounts, but on the HR module side, all the personnel were lumped into one salary account, so if you watch some of the earlier Board of Education meetings, there were some concern about the fact that it was showing some salaries not expended yet, we knew we were paying the people, so the new HR administrator on the school side has had to work with the human resource implementation consultant to go in and take the, all the people that were in, they were actually all charged to the substitute line, the permanent sub-line, and this has to go through in the HR module and allocate them to the respective salary lines. Up until now, I have had to go in and do that manually, and now the HR training that has occurred is that they're gonna go in and teach the HR person how it is that she can go into the, the Personnel Control Edgar and adjust those salary lines so that they're charged the correct lines.
Okay, so, so we're on, the Munis portion is getting resolved in that.
Correct, well, yes, I apologize, but yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so anybody else? All right, I have just a real quick question, and, and you might have answered it, Christine, when you were answering like the bank rec section part of it.
Okay.
In the other finding with the bank deposits in the cafeteria fund that weren't recorded as revenue, the other finding, in that correction action plan, it says that the revenue postings will be timely and monitored by many, who are the many? I mean, are they the same people who you're saying with the bank recs, or is that a different group of people?
We have internally, I'll take that if I may, internally between the food service staff, so that we have adequate separation of duties, they will process, you know, and turn over deposits to us, and then we, you know, ultimately, we've been admittedly, the town's been helping out with, you know, doing some of our deposits with personnel changes, but they have their records, and then we have our records, so that we will then reconcile to make sure the activity is the same, and then it'll ultimately be posted into Munis for recording purposes as we receive them. So we have, you know, multiple checks internally to make sure that what's revenue has been received and recorded in addition to submissions for the state reimbursement and federal reimbursements, once it comes in through the wire, that then we'll be able to record and reconcile with what the food service director submitted and what it is that we received.
Okay, all right, thanks, all right, anybody else? All right, so we are going to move on now to the Board of Selectmen FY twenty-one, twenty-two budget presentation.
Good evening again. Give me one second to pull this up. Okay, I'm pleased to submit my, my budget recommendation and the budget recommendation of the Board of Selectmen for your consideration. This budget is requesting a spending increase of point one-one percent over the current year's budget. As we go through this, I want to make sure people remember that we have three bargaining units whose contracts expire on June thirtieth, and they'll need to be renegotiated, those are the dispatchers, the Clerical Employees Union, and the Supervisors Union. Because of that, department budgets in our presentation do not include contractual obligations for any bargaining unit that's going to be out of contract, but estimates for contractually negotiated increases are included elsewhere in the budget and in the total percentage we're requesting. Trying now to figure out how to change the page, there we go. When Town Ordinance twenty-dash-one was presented, we committed to showing the voters that the existing funding that had been supporting the Broadbrook Fire Department was not being repurposed, as had been done previously when Warehouse Point came out of the budget. This budget keeps that commitment, we've identified and removed five-hundred-and-forty-seven-thousand, six-hundred-and-one dollars in expenses that had been used to support the fire district, including department funding, the fire marshal, workers' compensation costs, communication costs, and employee benefits. These charts show the funding apportionment between the Board of Education and town government, comparing the current fiscal year with the proposals submitted by the Board of Education and the Board of Selectmen. The proportional funding distribution is consistent at a sixty, forty split, with the Board of Ed requesting twenty-five thousand, four hundred, twenty-five million, four hundred and seventeen thousand, three hundred and sixty-five dollars, and the town requesting sixteen million, six hundred and six thousand, five hundred and seventy-three dollars. This chart shows how the municipal budget funding is dispersed in a bit more granular detail. As I said, the Board of Ed gets sixty percent of the total budget. Um, as I said, the Board of Ed gets 60% of the total budget. Public safety gets 11% of the total budget. Public infrastructure gets eight cents. Miscellaneous expenses, which include insurance, pension costs, workers' compensation and so on. Um, that gets eight percent of the budget. General government gets five percent. Community services gets three percent of the budget. So does capital outlay. Debt service gets two percent and contingency doesn't even rate at one percent of the overall budget. Looking at the funding distribution amongst town departments in dollars, you can see where the money is going. We spend four million on public safety, 3.6 million on public infrastructure. Uh, miscellaneous expenses gets about 3.5 million. General government gets almost 2.3 million. Community services, capital outlay and debt service each get about 1 million. Contingency expenses are limited to just 107,000. This slide breaks down the departments that are in the general government according to the uniform chart of accounts, which we're required to adhere to now. So some things actually are in different places than they used to be. For example, um, the building department isn't in the general government budget. It's in the public safety budget. Um, that's a UKO conformance move and, and there are others throughout the, the budget that may look a little out of place, but are now in compliance with the UKO requirements. Um, the Selectmen's budget is flat funded from the current year to the next year. We're recommending that the assessor's office see an increase of point nine percent. We're recommending a decrease in the tax collector's budget in the amount of 7,611 dollars. This is funding that had been previously budgeted for a part-time staff position. Our recommendation is to repurpose that funding to another department for another purpose that we'll talk about in a minute. We're recommending an increase in the treasurer's office of point three three percent. This year, we are recommending flat funding the legal budget. Um, I do want to note again that there are three labor contracts set to expire at the end of the fiscal year and that they do need to be renegotiated, but I'm confident we can do at least some of that work within the current fiscal year. So I'm comfortable leaving that budget flat into the next fiscal year. We're recommending that the activities and fees be increased by 7.48 percent. Most of this recommendation is due to the increased support for the cemetery association, um, which we're asking to support at a level of $25,000 this year, which is a $10,000 increase. The information technology buzzet budget is going up by 6.65 percent. This is driven by inclusion of funds for cybersecurity audit, increased costs and software licensing to support new state mandates around police accountability and increases in multiple department hosting fees. So requesting that the town clerk funding be increased by 1.18% or 1,733 dollars. Amy Lamb is still relatively new to the position and this is her first budget as the department head. So we're trying to get this budget to a truer number and less reliant on non-general, uh, non-general fund funding sources. The registrars are requesting an increase of point three seven percent or 247 dollars. We're recommending that the planning department increase by 9.42%. However, most of that funding is repurposed from other departments and is not a new allocation. The funding increase here is our second highest priority and one of the few departments where we're recommending a significant increase in budget. It's clearly understood that the focus throughout town government needs to be on customer service. And I think that's particularly true in this, in the planning department. We now have two new permanent employees that have joined us in recent months that we think will be very valuable to the town in the years moving forward. That's our new town planner, Clark Chapin, and our new zoning enforcement officer, Ruth Ann Calabrese. The funding increase that we're requesting would support the work being done within the planning department on key issues uh, that, or I'm sorry, would support the work being done within the planning department on key issues by retaining as a consultant, um, the person who had, who had been acting as our interim town planner, but we would be repurposing him in a slightly different way. Coming up in the next year, I expect that the department will be working on a number of key initiatives moving forward. The Broadbrook Mill remediation redevelopment, resolution of the South Road ownership issue, qualification for sustainable CT, Warehouse Point Village Study Implementation, Plan of Conservation and Development Implementation, review and rewrite of zoning regulations, encouragement of economic development opportunities and great grant writing and implementation. So I think that with the right staff in place and with the right funding to support that staff, that department is poised to do some really impressive things that will only serve to be at the town's benefit. None of the money that, uh, we're requesting in the increase in the department's professional services line, which is what drives the requested increase in is new money. It repurposes previously budgeted money from the first Selectmen's professional services budget, the tax collector's part-time line and the Economic Development Commission's professional services line. Or Selectmen's recommendation for public safety. Um, the police department is our biggest priority in this year's budget and for good reason. The chief and the deputy have developed a robust and innovative concept that would put our police department on the cutting edge of preventative policing by standing up a mental health team within the Eastones or Police Department, and that would undoubtedly have a positive impact townwide. The town would also could be, or the, the team would also be comprised of clinical, so of a clinical social worker, who is also a fully certified police officer and holds an MSW and would be supported by two part-time social workers and a rotating university or college intern. The initiative will work closely with the Youth Services Bureau that already exists in the Department of Community Services as well as the social services offices within the school district. It'll be housed outside of the police department, but still in the town hall annex. And it'll focus on increased support for residents with mental health issues throughout the community. As recently as last week, Chief DeMarco, Deputy Chief Hart, Lieutenant Carl and I met with the Connecticut Commissioner of Public Safety, Commissioner Ravella, to talk about this idea and concept. We really think that this can be a model for other departments to look at as the Police Accountability Act starts to be implemented. And Commissioner Ravella was so impressed with our idea and concept that within 30 minutes of concluding our presentation, he had the commander of post C on the phone with the chief to talk about presenting this innovative idea to that council. That meeting is scheduled for tomorrow. The innovation behind this idea is being recognized by the state and by other departments who are, have already met with us uh, to talk about how they could adapt something similar in their own case. The concept of a mental health team also takes great stride to meet the needs of the community. And the police department can show that calls for services are overwhelmingly driven by mental health issues. As, as one of that, that detail when they present their budget to you, but they, they have a deep, deep dive into data analytics to support the need for this within our community. They're able to look at, set as details as low as census blocks in town um, to determine where it's most likely to need support for mental health intervention, the frequency of that need, even being able to quantify the days of the week and the hours of the day when most mental health calls are likely to occur. Institution of the Mental Health Team will also provide much needed in-house support for police officers who often have to face some pretty terrible circumstances or events. This compounding stress and difficult work have a detrimental impact on our officers and on their families. By instituting this program, we can provide a real help for both our residents and our departmental staff members. This content, concept takes another aspect of the Police Accountability Act and strengthens the intention of that law, which particularly pertains to psychological evaluations. By having an in-house interventionist, we can provide much quicker, trusted and more meaningful aid to police officers within the department. The chief and the deputy have done a great job of putting this together, and I think you're really going to find their presentation to be valuable. I think at the end of it, you'll agree that this, this type of forward-thinking police work is needed in our community. And it's another example of why our, our department has the support that it does within town. Overall, the police department budget is, uh, recommended to increase by 4.33% largely due to contract increases and to this new initiative. The emergency management budget, uh, ref, two things, this increase reflects two things. The already approved stipends for the emergency management team and for town access to the Everbridge system. The stipends are for four people, Chief DeMarco, Deputy Chief Hart, Lieutenant Carl and Judy Tweedley. And they won't increase again until fiscal year 2324. From my experience, being new to my position at the time, 2020 showed us how important these folks are when disaster really happens. And um, throughout the, the long slog of this pandemic, they've been there the whole way. I, I really appreciate their help and their leadership. Uh, the other piece of it is Everbridge and Everbridge is the town's access to send emergency notice notifications and uh, it's the system that I use for the weekly townwide update calls that have proven to be very popular, particularly amongst older folks. Um, the building department professional services line has been funded at a level of about $20,000 for many years. Although it's largely gone unspent, we are recommending despite that, that we increase this budget line by $10,000 in anticipation of significant, significant inspection needs to take place in the next fiscal year. We're thinking about gravel pit solar, which will be huge. Um, we're thinking about the Silverman Group, Calamar, United Ag and Turf, and others that haven't yet hit the, the public wires. Rand has also requested funding to make his part-time clerk full-time and to add an additional part-time inspector, both of which we talked about, but we couldn't recommend funding. But nonetheless, thought the Board of Finance should know about that and may want to consider that in their own right. The building department would be going up by 4.51%. The recommendation, uh, to increase the public infrastructure budget reflects the settled labor contract within DPW, which does include a full-time wage increase, but also eliminates longevity and standby pay. We are also recommending sufficient funding to increase part-time help within this department. We're recommending town property increase by 2.68%. We're suggesting keeping road maintenance flat next year. And sanitation costs are expected to go up by 6.37%. Rising sanitation costs are a significant municipal issue throughout Connecticut because it's just expensive to get rid of trash. Len will speak more about this budget and what's driving those increased costs during the workshop process. And we do think it's also important to note that we are again foregoing hazardous waste collection, which would cost an additional $20,000. I have started getting some calls in the office asking us to, to consider setting up hazardous waste collection um, events. Those have just started happening recently, but I wanted you to be aware of that as, as you're all in the budget throes, that we are starting to get some constituent requests for that. Our recommendation for community services, um, so Director Maltese is responsible for three divisions within our town's Community Services Department. She's responsible for senior services, social services and recreation. For senior services, we're recommending an increase of point four six percent. This is just the increase of a part-time pay, uh, due to the minimum wage increases and of longevity, as is required by contract. Maltese has noted that her budget last year about where she anticipated needing it, but because of COVID-19, uh, she didn't really get an opportunity to test that or to implement that. So she's asked that um, we, we stick with the assumption that she made going into the current fiscal year. For social services, we're recommending an increase of point two five percent, which just covers a minimum wage increase for a part-time admin assistant. For the, the, for the recreation department, we're recommending an increase of 1.53%. This includes a minimum wage increase and supplies for the splash pad. For our libraries, we're recommending an increase for the Broadbrook Library of $7,500 and for the Warehouse Point Library of $10,500. The miscellaneous cluster includes debt service, capital outlay, employee benefits and contingency. Increased recommendation for debt service is two percent. Uh, I'm recommending that the capital outlay be flat funded this year at $920,000, as was discussed earlier. Um, and we would retain in the budget the 94,666 for lease purchase payments. Uh, you guys just recently voted on that. So you, you recollect that by doing that added appropriation, uh, that we hope to have passed at the first budget referendum, that 94,000 is currently in there for lease purchase could be repurposed for additional capital projects. So that's, that's the justification with keeping that budget line flat is that it's potentially an additional $10,000 or 10% available for capital projects beyond what is currently available. Um, employee benefits are anticipated to go up by 3.04%, largely driven by health insurance cost increases, which we're budgeting at a three percent increase. Um, that is quite the departure from the 22% increase that was initially quoted to us last year before we can convert it to the prevention, Connecticut Prevention Partnership. Contingency is recommended to increase by 12,000. Uh, we know that we have three bargaining unit contracts. Again, that'll be out of contract at the end of, of the year. Um, and we also have one affiliated, unaffiliated department head who's out of contract. That's the town engineer and DPW director. We also recently re-signed Amy's contract, um, and so that will need to be updated within the treasurer's office budget. That agreement was reached subsequent to the Board of Selectmen approving the budget, so it, uh, isn't reflected in what was submitted to you. Here are the items that we would point to as new initiatives within the budget. Um, I talked at length about the preventative policing mental health team. That's something that we, we are really proud of and we're really excited about. And we, we really do think that you will agree with that. Um, I also talked a bit about the recently rebuilt planning department. Now that we have a strong team in place, we think it's important to provide them with the tools and resources that they need to succeed. Ruth and Clark are the right fit for that department. And, and I think that if we support them and help them to be successful, then that ultimately will lead to the town's success. The cybersecurity audit, um, is an, is an idea that Selectman Baker advanced, and in the modern era, it really does make good sense. Um, God forbid, if we, if we're exposed to a ransomware event, um, the cost of the town will be exponential, uh, compared to the cost of the audit. So it's just good sense to make sure that we're, we're buttoned up tight. Um, we also, as I said, we're, we're expecting additional inspection services needs uh, because of some of the economic development activities. So we did include funding for that. And we thought it appropriate to include additional funding for the cemeteries and the libraries. Opportunities that should be considered, uh, but that aren't included in here. I talked about the hazardous waste collection. Um, we talked about the staffing level within the building department. In the event that the mental health team is not funded, um, we still need to address the Youth Service Bureau. Um, we have a grant that allows us effectively one part-time person to do that work. And we have not had any good fortune in terms of recruiting somebody who's willing to take on that role at a, on a part-time basis. So in the event that you don't fund the mental health team, which would be supported by the YSB, uh, or by the YSB funding, then, um, we need to look at turning that into a full-time position. Um, and lastly, one of the, the facilities projects that we eliminated out of hope of being able to do it another way, but I, I should, uh, make you aware of it is the HVAC upgrade that's necessary at the senior center. Um, that's a $30,000 expense. Um, so we're hopeful that, um, you know, if the opportunity presents itself, we can either address that in the current fiscal year by year end, doing some transfers, or you all would include that as a budget consideration for the next fiscal year. I talked about, or we, we've already addressed the bonding proposal, so I will skip that. Uh, and I'll just ask if there are any questions.
Thanks, Jason. So are there any questions for Jason?
Carolyn, Snoring. Yep. And on that HVAC for the senior center, um, is that something that needs to get done before we can like reopen that senior center with the COVID situation at all? Are we, are we, you know, gonna run a problem bringing people back in there if the HVAC's not updated and corrected?
So in, in the normal circumstance, I would say no, it, it, but it will lead to some discomfort. Um, just because when it gets hot, we're, we're not going to be able to provide a comfort, comfortable place for them. However, the guidelines around safely reopening with, uh, in the COVID-19 world are very fluid. Um, and so I can't tell you definitively be a condition that, that is ultimately put in place either by CDC or DPH. Uh, but as of my understanding, as of right now, it's not a requirement. It's, but it, it's something that we need to do.
Thanks.
You follow that?
Thank you.
Anybody else? Any questions right now?
This is Bill and I, uh, except have looked over some numbers and I'm looking forward to getting into it, but I, I think the Selectmen did a, a good job of presenting a, a reasonable budget to us and um, like I said, we'll review it and go from there. But I, I do appreciate the work they put into it. Looks good.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'd love that. Very well thought out. Appreciate all the work and the information. It's very comprehensive.
Anybody else? All right. Sounds good. So now we will move on to the Board of Ed 2122 budget presentation.
Okay. I'm going to share my screen while Kathy.
All set. All right. So thank you for the opportunity to share some information about the BOE FY22 budget request with both the public and the Board of Finance tonight. As shared by our superintendent at the February public hearing, our current academic year has been overwhelmingly focused on responding to factors created by the COVID-19 pandemic. But despite the challenges, the pandemic has created our work and our planning continue to be driven by our strategic plan and the recently adopted Portrait of a Graduate. The strategic plan is a five-year plan. Current plan is created in 2016 by a group that included staff, board members and community members, and it will be reviewed again prior to the close of this year. Plan includes concrete steps determined by the stakeholders involved to be important for improvement of the district, the facilities and the performance of both staff and students. The Portrait of a Graduate, which was also created with community input, reflects the qualities that East Windsor as a community believes that our students should possess by the time they graduate from East Windsor High School. These two documents are two of the primary drivers of our budget planning. The Connecticut State Department of Education has also shared priorities that they believe should be in the forefront of district planning, both this year and looking forward to next year in support of our students. The state's priorities align with both our strategic plan and the Portrait of a Graduate. All of these priorities combined are used to prioritize the BOE budget for the benefit of our students. These are the five areas of focus for the strategic plan. Each of these areas includes multiple priorities and action and multiple action steps. But you can see we're focusing on curriculum, instruction, assessment, professional learning, family and community engagement, the physical plant and our operations. While the Portrait of a Graduate has multiple qualities identified, such as curious learners, problem solvers, reflective and civic contributors, all the qualities that we want to instill in our students fall into these three primary areas. East Windsor wants to develop informed lifelong learners who are self-aware individuals and responsible citizens. Due to COVID-19, this current academic year has led us to providing an even larger variety of services and instructional variations for our students than we normally would. Some of that is driven by the need to support our approximately 250 remote students. Our instructional support included posting over 200,000 lessons on CSAR at the elementary level, providing 1,300 laptops for student and staff. And as you see here, we're providing synchronous learning for those students learning fully remotely and those learning from home during hybrid days. We've provided intervention both in-person and remotely to over 150 students at Broadbrook and middle school for reading and math. We utilize all available assessment data to guide our instructional decisions. Before we look at the numbers on this slide, let me explain the slide and the next slide. Let me explain that tier one reflects students who are at or above grade level. Tier two are those one grade level below, and tier three are students who are well below targeted levels. That means that we want the percentage of students in tiers two and three to decrease while those in tier one increase. Obviously, as students move up from tier three, they may, we may see an increase in the tier two percentages as they move forward. Of course, the goal is always to be moving students to a higher tier. So on this slide, you can see that our overall district reading growth shows that district-wide, the number of students performing at or above grade level, which is the tier one, has increased from 28 to 39%. While those performing one grade below or more has decreased, both tiers two and tiers three. This is data from iReady, an assessment that we began using this year as part of the instructional and curriculum changes needed to improve student performance. Our overall district math growth shows that district-wide, we are seeing the number of students performing well below targeted levels, tier three, has decreased from 39 to 28%. And the numbers of students performing at or above grade level or one grade level below expected levels, tiers one and two, is increasing. Our students' math and ELA performance is moving in a way that suggests the instructional changes that we've made are having a positive impact, even with the substantial changes in instruction and the added stressors impacting our students during COVID-19. Administrators and instructional staff will continue utilizing data to make instructional changes to increase the performance of students. The funding provided for nursing services allowed our district to respond to the extensive medical needs that were a direct result of positive cases in our East Windsor Public School community, but also respond to the extensive need related to contact tracing and supporting ill staff and students during the school day. Our nursing services continue to include regular medication administration, emergency response as needed, ensuring our students meet traditional vaccination requirements, ensuring physicals and other mandatory medical documentation is provided, and providing mandated training for staff. We are very proud of the work that Wendy Gage, our healthcare coordinator, has done in her role as our COVID-19 liaison since the summer. The ongoing funding for our social workers, both through the local appropriation and through grants, has allowed us to support our students, but also our staff with the challenges of dealing with the pandemic, in addition to the other factors that influence their lives. In the past, we have spoken about ACEs, adverse childhood experiences that impact the physical, emotional and academic well-being of our students. This pandemic is also an ace, adding more trauma to the lives of our children. Direct counseling has been provided to 125 students, both in-person and remotely. In addition, family meetings and consultations have been done, and we've coordinated with outside agencies and our choice program contacts. At least 30 home visits have occurred since November, with many of these visits resulting in students feeling supported enough to return to in-person learning. Our home visits continue weekly. We continue to deliver a research-based social-emotional learning curriculum and utilize restorative practice, both of which helps students regulate their emotions and behavioral responses and to feel safe, supported at school. Feeling safe is the first critical step in students having the ability to learn while in school. While our primary areas of focus have been to provide academic instruction and services along with medical and mental health support, we recognize that many factors make for a safe and engaging school environment. We were pleased that the FY21 budget allowed for continued high school sports, and for the first time in many years, we were able to offer middle school sports. We recognize the physical and mental benefits of being able to participate in an organized athletic activity, and we know our students need to be able to engage with peers and have positive social interactions. We have ensured our buildings are clean, disinfected and well-maintained, both for COVID-19 specific protocols and the ongoing work required to keep buildings of our size working well and safe. We provided more than 12,000 meals to our students and continue to provide them for remote learners. During this time, we have also seen an increase in the percentage of our in-person students who are eating in the cafeteria for breakfast and lunch. We also increased communication to families with a weekly parent update from the superintendent and created a new reopening information webpage on the East Windsor Public School website. This is in addition to the ongoing information on the portals, the district website, monthly newsletters and other information shared on the district Facebook page. The FY22 budget request reflects four notable changes. We we propose to replace a math tutor with a certified math teacher who can provide additional interventions. Our family and consumer science teacher position was reduced from full-time to a .8 position several years ago due to budget reductions. We have 164 course requests for classes taught by this teacher compared to the 105 students scheduled this year. That results in the need for increasing this position back to full-time. Our special education department supports over 230 students on IEPs. Special education is governed by federal law and many state regulations. Adding a PPT facilitator facilitator position will allow us to better meet the needs of our students with special needs and their families, along with ensuring our ongoing ability to meet mandated processes and timelines. After several years, the BOE has added funds for summer learning for our general education students at all three schools. This has never been more critical than now after the way this past year has impacted learning for so many of our students. The FY22 budget request allows us to maintain our support of the academic, social, emotional and health needs of our students, while also providing activities and resources that foster a sense of belonging in the school community. The requested budget will allow us to continue to provide middle school and high school sports. We will also maintain the number of intervention staff in FY22 with our social workers, our nursing staff and academic interventionists. Students who experienced experienced academic challenges prior to the pandemic continue to need support, and many others now are dealing with challenges due to the loss of in-school learning time. This budget also includes a late bus, which allows students students to participate in clubs and activities. The BOE budget request is $25,417,365. It represents a 2.9% increase in the local appropriation. While our overall proposed budget represents a 4% increase, the BOE receives revenue from multiple sources in addition to the local appropriation. Those sources include multiple state and federal grants, as well as tuition and special education reimbursements for our students in the choice program. Funds provided through grants must be used for the purpose for which the grant was created. We have other smaller revenue sources, including building use funds and preschool tuition. This grant funding that I'm talking about does not include the additional grants made available to the district specifically for COVID relief and recovery as those can't be used to supplant the normal budget. The grant revenue covers the difference between the BOE total budget and the amount requested from the local appropriation. As expected, the largest portion of the BOE budget primarily reflects the salaries and benefits of over 200 staff that serve the students of East Windsor. It is our staff that meets the needs of our students on a daily basis. In addition to our staff, the budget funds transportation for all students, tuition for special education schools, as well as vocational and agricultural programs, along with supplies, utilities and maintenance of our facilities. Overall, there are both increases and decreases reflected in the local appropriation request, as you can see. The category other includes things such as travel, professional development, postage. The BOE is asking to be able to maintain the services and opportunities currently available to the students of East Windsor. We believe a 2.9% increase of increase in conjunction with planful use of the COVID relief and recovery funds will allow us to meet the academic, health and social, emotional needs of our students. Thank you for your time and the opportunity to share this information, and I hope you enjoyed the pictures that we were able to share of our staff and students. If anyone has any questions.
Any questions from the board? Give you a couple of seconds to.
Yes, I have a couple. First, you know, thanks for sharing all this information. One thing, you know, you had the reading group, which I like the year-over-year increase. I see tier one, 39, tier two, 31, tier three, 31. What's our target?
Well, ultimately, David, I think the, you know, the grand target would be, of course, 100% of our students reading in tier one. But if you follow the response to intervention research and model, that would suggest approximately 80% of our students would be reading on grade level with regular classroom support.
Yeah, so I guess more specifically, like year-over-year target, obviously, we we want to be at 100%, but kind of, you know, what's, and you know, this isn't meant to be a got you, but like, how are you guys tracking your own progress? You know, what do you expect to see next year? And then the year after, you know, what are your strategic targets?
Right, I will need to actually look, I didn't bring the the data from iReady in terms of what normal growth is, but I will certainly have that for the workshop next time. Right now, and that this year is so such an anomaly, I hope.
Yeah.
That we're seeing growth is one, the primary goal that we are seeing growth in the academics. The other challenge that we have with iReady is we've just started using it. So we can't really look to last year. So we're beginning to use this new assessment tool in a very atypical year. So even the statistics that I will get for you folks, you know, that probably is out the window to some degree this year. And and quite frankly, even, you know, it will be challenging to track if we'll be able to hit typical growth or more than typical growth next year. Because we we're not quite sure what school's gonna look like next year yet.
Yeah, I understand all that. I just, you know, I think it's good to have like a target that we're shooting for because if we just kind of say we're gonna grow, it's it becomes a pigment, right? And then I get to it, you know, and again, obviously, I'm sure you don't have this tonight, but for the math, I would also just say, and, you know, take this for what it is, but it's my opinion. Like, those numbers are especially concerning. And then, you know, if I think about how important STEM is to, you know, career growth, and there's so many initiatives, especially to get young women into STEM. You know, I really, in conjunction with, you know, turning a math tutor to a permanent teacher, like, I'd really like to see some sort of plan and, hey, you know, this is what we envisioned, and this is how we're going to, you know, ready these kids in math for the future.
Right, we're, again, I'm happy to share much more and certainly, you know, looking back at Board of Ed recordings, Mr. Rule Art, our curriculum director, has shared some of those changes that are being adopted or have been adopted in the district, including a very substantial curriculum change in math. So you know, we've been speaking to the Board of Ed about those changes and the modifications, particularly to the math curriculum for, you know, a good chunk of last year and and all of this academic year.
Yeah, and then this is just clarification for me. What is a family and consumer science teacher?
Typically, they would be the ones who teach foods-related courses like baking and culinary. I think we probably would have called them similar to home ec.
Got it.
Not, but that has changed as as the years have gone on.
And then, you know, on the late buses, are we doing after-school groups in COVID?
Right now, anything that we're doing is remote, but the goal for next year is to not only have socially-based activities such as our clubs, such as our clubs coming back, but also we're planning to provide some level of academic assistance after school next year. And many of our students have access the late bus traditionally for sports, for clubs. So we would like to put that back into place so they can access those and the academic support.
Okay.
Anybody else right now? Questions?
This is just Bill, and I think you guys touched on it a little bit. The numbers you presented present nothing, no dollars from from the COVID relief dollars. But and and this is the way you guys are proposing a budget that that, you know, increases summer school, and you just mentioned after-school activities for helping to is if you do now, we say you can't use COVID dollars for anything we would normally do. But if you have to increase summer school for students to get them back on track or or after-school tutoring for back on track, is that, if you have to increase those expenses, the COVID dollars can be used for something like that, but that's not anything to do with the budget you guys are presenting to us, correct?
Correct. So we have talked about adding summer school to some degree. We've had summer school at the high school for years. Typically, it has been COVID, my goodness, I'm COVID obsessed now. Credit recovery. So we are looking to increase that support. But quite honestly, looking with the, looking at the numbers of our students, primarily at the high school level.
primarily at the high school level, who are disengaged learners, the numbers that we've included in our budget will not be sufficient to meet the needs of the students who need to catch up on credits and who have lost instruction due to being out of school or, quite frankly, becoming disengaged as we went to remote learning. So if we were only to use what was in the budget, it would in no way meet the needs of the students that we're programming for.
Right. So I guess that you did answer my question. So what's in the budget is what you would do in a normal, non-COVID year for summer school and after-school activities. So anything that comes in that you guys, you know, we have dumb dollars available to us to help the elementary school kids that are behind in reading or, you know, set of high school kids that don't have the credits, that would come out of the COVID dollars, and that would not affect any of the numbers you presented to us, well, tonight or going forward.
Right. I want to make sure that we're clear that we, we have not, the Board of Ed has not been able, has not been in the position to include typical summer school for a number of years, but we did this year, even prior to knowing about some of the funding sources for COVID, and those came after. So any of the COVID summer school, you know, our hope would be to maintain the summer school numbers that we've presented in FY22 out of the local appropriation as an ongoing resource for our students, and then additional summer and after-school support would be out of the COVID funds.
That was my question. Thank you.
Okay, good.
Anybody else?
Geraldine Snory.
Yep.
Kathy or Christine, that PPT position that you want to add?
Yes.
Would that be somebody who essentially is overseeing all of the special ed and the EIPs?
Overseeing, they wouldn't have a supervisory role if that's what you meant, but they would be the ones running the meetings and ensuring that we are compliant with timelines, with the components of all the IEPs. We are now, but with the numbers growing and the number of students that require support and the types of programming that we have, it's becoming more than what Dr. Tudring can manage on his own. So the numbers combined with the fact that the state is changing to a new IEP format, within the next two years, this person will be able to facilitate us having a smooth transition to that new format, and we believe we'll be able to provide the substantial training needed for the remainder of our special ed staff.
And one other question. At what grade level are we teaching languages?
For, like, non-English, modern language?
Yeah, foreign languages.
Right now, it's high school. There is some potential, depending on course requests, for us to transfer a foreign language teacher that is currently working at the high school to the middle school. That's a budget-neutral thing, so we didn't speak to it. There is potential for that, but right now, it's at the high school. The Spanish teacher was cut from the middle school two years ago, I believe, in the budget.
I think it was longer.
Okay, three maybe?
I'm not even sure. It was a while ago.
Yeah, yeah.
And what languages do they have a choice of? Is it just Spanish?
No, actually, we have Spanish, French, American Sign Language, Italian. I want to say Polish. Some of these are done through an online program, but we are extremely fortunate to have one of our teachers at the high school who is multilingual, and I believe that she is proficient in six languages. So she has been supporting our students who are doing the online learning. So there's multiple languages that they have access to, but the most traditional instructional model is delivering Spanish instruction.
Thank you.
Sure.
All right, anybody else?
Hey, one just follow-up on the COVID relief, like, and I understand that you guys have not yet seen kind of the parameters of that. But what I think would probably be helpful is like, surely you must have, you know, two or three ideas that it's like, hey, this is something that we definitely need to do with that. So if you could, you know, expand on that, and again, we can do that at the next budget workshop, but I think that would be useful for everyone to hear.
David, I can tell you that some of it we do, because one of the grants has been written, and actually, we're requesting reimbursement, but one of the grant applications hasn't been written, and I don't even have a dollar amount for a final one. So we can give you ideas, but it would be very gross ideas at this point.
Yeah, I understand.
Yeah, we can give, I just wanted to make sure, but, because all of these funding are at different stages, so.
All right, anybody else? All right, so we are all good. Thank you very much. We'll move on to number 10, unfinished business, of which we don't have any right now. Number 11, Board Member Comments. I'll go around just really quick. Karen Christensen.
I just want to thank both the Board of Ed and Jason for their presentations. I found them very informative and very good.
Thank you.
Star is Karen on our website too, if you want to, and we'll mail it to Amy afterwards as well, so that you guys can have a copy of it, if you'd like.
All right, David King?
Yeah, I mean, I would just echo that, you know, thanks for all the work, guys, and putting together the, you know, quite comprehensive presentations. You know, Jay, especially, you know, it's very refreshing to see this level of detail. Appreciate it and looking forward to digging in.
Sounds good. Tom Lantner?
I would concur with both David and Karen, thanking Jay and the Board of Ed folks for their presentations. And I've listened to a number of them already with the Board of Selectmen, and I think when we get to hear some of them, especially the Police Department and the level of data that they've been able to accrue, it's going to be quite amazing. But I'm very impressed with what I've seen so far. Thanks for everybody's presentations tonight.
Bill Stein?
Yeah, I mean, I think everyone's pretty much taking the words from me, but, you know, I think our, we got, you know, kind of looking forward to the budget cycle again. Wish it could be in person. I don't like doing this Zoom thing and kind of, you know, like to be with people, but, you know, we'll make the best of it and make it happen.
There you go. And Tom Talamini?
I'd like to just thank the presenters like everybody else. They did a good job, very informative.
Sounds good. All right, now, number 12 is upcoming meeting dates. So we will actually be here again on, what, the March 24th, which is next week, and then the rest of the schedule. So if there's nothing else, I would call for a motion to adjourn.
This is Bill. I'm moving adjourned.
All right, is there a second?
A second.
Christian, send a second.
All right, any discussion? All right, all those in favor. Karen Christensen?
Yes.
David King?
Yes.
Tom Lantner?
Yes.
Bill Stein?
Yes.
Tom Talamini?
Yes.
All right, have a great week, guys.
See you next week.